This meeting is being recorded and will be available shortly hereafter for scheduled and on-demand viewing on any smartphone or tablet device. If anyone else is recording the meeting, please let me know. Pursuant to Governor Baker's June 16, 2021 signing of an act relative to extending certain COVID-19 measures adopted during the state of emergency, including the extension of his March 12, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, that's General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 20, until July 15, 2022, this meeting of the Chatham Select Board is being conducted via in-person and remote participation. Every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings as provided for in the order. A reminder that persons who would like to listen to this meeting while in progress may do so by calling the phone number 1-508-945-4410. Our conference ID is 203-386-491-Pound, or join the meeting online via Microsoft Teams through the link in the posted agenda. Well, this is a live broadcast and simulcast on Channel 18. Despite our best efforts, we may not be able to provide for real-time access. We will post, excuse me, a record of this meeting on the town's website as soon as possible. A segue to that is we've been having a little problem potentially with our Wi-Fi and Teams. We're not sure it will stay on through the whole time. If the people on Teams, if it goes out, please go to your, go directly to the TV and you can call it. No, you won't be able to call in either. So go directly to the TV. If you'd like to participate, you're more than welcome to come down here. Hopefully, that won't happen. Just a reminder for everyone on Teams, please mute your mic and turn off your cameras until recognized by the Chair. Let's start with a roll call. Start with our Vice Chair, Shereen Davis.
Present.
Our Clerk, Corey Metters.
Present.
Select Board Member, Deana Castro.
Present.
Select Board Members, Jeff Dykens.
Present.
And the Chair, Peter Kokolas, is present. Let me go through again at the beginning to just give you an overview of what we're doing. We'll start off with our minutes of April 19. We'll then move into public announcements and agenda item requests. Those are only announcements and just to ask for an agenda. Then we'll go into new business where we'll talk, we'll have public comments on our business agenda, which are the following items, excluding the personnel evaluation, which is a personnel issue. Business agenda, board discussion items. The first one is special one-day alcohol permit for the Creative Arts Center. Then we're going to consider our recommendation for the second day of the 2022 Annual Town Meeting. Then we'll go move up to an Energy and Climate Action Committee update. We then have a vote on our, for annual town meeting, 2022 citizen petition, Article 60, for tent camping. Then we move into consider a request by Monomoy Regional School Committee to submit a joint Chatham-Harwich letter on Monomoy Regional School District changes. Then we'll move into use of Community Center for Private Functions, Social Events, and then finally the Town Manager Performance Evaluation. So, having gone through all that, let me start with our minutes. April 19. Do you have a motion to approve?
Second.
Any changes, discussions, issues? No? Take a vote. Jean called, Deana called me this time. Shereen?
Aye.
Corey?
Aye.
Dean?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Chair says aye. All right. Do we have any public announcements or agenda item requests? I see one coming up. And if you're on the Teams, or please raise your hand. I see a couple there. Welcome.
Mr. Chairman, I'm Jay Coburn, and I'm the CEO of the Community Development Partnership. As you probably know, we're the region's nonprofit community development corporation, providing housing consulting services to the town, but also advocating for housing and supporting small businesses throughout the Lower Cape Towns.
And I'm Hadley Leddy, the CEO of the Homeless Prevention Council, where we provide case management solutions to promote stability for all who live on the eight towns of the Lower and Outer Cape.
Super. Thank you. Welcome, both of you, and really with both organizations. Very well.
Thank you. Thank you. We just wanted to take a couple of minutes to announce to you, the Select Board and the citizens of the town of Chatham, about the creation of a Lower Cape Housing and Accessory Dwelling Unit Resource Center. Thanks to the efforts of our state representative, Representative Sarah Peak, who secured a million dollars in ARPA funds between our two organizations, we have come up with this new program to try to address the very urgent short-term housing affordability needs in our region. Chatham, along with many other towns in the region, have been making tremendous progress over the last couple of years, with pretty much every Lower Cape Town having at least one significant affordable housing project in the development pipeline. But we know that those units are two, three, four, and five years off. And all of us, I think, are very much aware of the tremendous need we have for housing that's affordable for people who live and work in our communities year-round. And so we have launched this new center. The first thing that we will, are going to do is take advantage of what many of the towns, including Chatham, have done, and that is to streamline and reform their accessory dwelling unit bylaws, to work with homeowners to help get those units created. While the process is certainly now a lot easier, it is difficult for the average homeowner to be able to deal with the design, septic flow permitting, getting those units built, financing them, and then even turning into a landlord. And so we will be operating a resource center with staff on the ground to be able to hold the hand of homeowners to create these accessory dwelling units.
Great. And then another few components of the center that we're really excited about is that we will be really supporting local residents in offering a housing stability fund for residents who are not otherwise eligible for housing support or existing programs that are available. Many of you have heard of the hidden homeless, or people that are basically falling through the cracks of our safety net. And so this will be one way that we're able to really stabilize housing by having residents come to us for this purpose. We will also partner with any landlords that create housing through this initiative to provide something called Resident Services, which we already offer to Lower and Outer Cape affordable housing providers, including the CDP, where we're really able to focus on housing stabilization, making sure the people that are housed maintain their housing. So whenever an issue arises, we're able to provide case management solutions to keep them housed. And then we will also be offering an online resource library and community training resources, as well as the ability for people to list their rentals locally for Lower and Outer Cape people seeking various rental opportunities. Thank you.
So additional information is available at a joint website, lowercapehousing.org. And if the Select Board would like for us to come back and talk about these initiatives in greater detail at a later date, we'd be more than happy to do that. Thank you very much for your time.
I'll take that as an agenda item request, and thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I missed Alex first, but Alex, I see your hands up.
Aye, yes. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, I just want to remind the public that tax bills are due Monday, May 2, by 4:00 PM at the Treasurer Collector's Office. There are numerous ways that citizens can pay, either online through our website, and if you pay via ACH, it's free, no charge. Also, credit cards are accepted online. There is a fee, 2.95% fee on your tax bill, so often people don't opt for that choice, but it is available for those who may wish to pay that way. In person, the Treasurer's Office is open from 8 until 4, Monday through Friday. And also, there's a drop box right outside of 549 Main Street, on the right-hand side of the building, towards the entrance as you come in. For check deposits only, please do not deposit any cash into that drop box. And if you have not received a tax bill, please contact the Treasurer Collector's Office as soon as possible. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Anything from the Board? Okay, I guess we're all right, Alex. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, I see another hand up. Elaine. Elaine Gibbs.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, I have an agenda item request. I would ask that the Board revisit the water ban that was put in place. It's not supposed to be reviewed for about another two months, but once it was posted, I think there are some unintended consequences, as it's written, and it's causing a fair amount of confusion. It says that power washing of boat bottoms and flushing of engines and washing of gear is permitted, but during the discussion, I thought the Board had said that that was for the winterization of boats, but it's still there. So that means that marinas and recreational boaters can use pretty much unlimited water for their boats at the marinas and at the town landings and the fish pier, but homeowners can't wash off pollen and bird droppings from their sidewalks and furniture. Nurseries can water. Rental properties have no restrictions. There can be 15 to 20 people in a house taking multiple showers a day. Builders have no restrictions. They can build a brand-new home and put in a half a million dollars worth of landscaping and put in a pool. And according to this, they can water the landscaping and the sod and fill the pool, because you can only not top off pools. Full-time residents, however, have to let their lawns die and their plantings die. But if they do die and we have to replace them, then we can water them. Many people in town, residents, full-time residents, their homes are their only investment, and certainly their largest. Brewster, Brewster put in a partial ban, even though their water levels are lower, and they're allowed to water on odd and even days. There has to be some kind of a balance here. When boaters, many of whom are tourists and don't even live in Chatham, can be given preferential treatment for cleaning their boats, I think that that has to be addressed. We all understand that there is a problem with water, and we are not going to be reckless, especially full-time residents, because we depend on our drinking water. But I also think there has to be balance and equity in this policy, and it simply is not. If everyone had, is put on the same two-day-a-week, which is less than every other day, I think that that would go a long way before any severe damage is done to personal property. And so I would ask you to revisit it and to look at the unintended consequences, because there are numerous ones. Certain people can use as much water as they want, but those, the people in town who are just trying to keep what they have without losing it and then having to incur huge expenses when the ban is lifted are treated differently. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Elaine. Dean?
Mr. Chairman, if I could just make a comment, just in response to what Elaine was saying. Elaine, with respect to the boating issue, I know that that was said, what you said, I think by the time we actually took the vote, the comment was made, well, the use of water by boaters at the beginning of the season isn't as extensive as the use at the end of it, so that's why that was included. But I wanted to say in particular, I won't make this a formal Select Board Member request, because we only have a couple of meetings left before town meeting, but I wouldn't mind seeing this revisited with the prospect that we could limit the restriction to several days a week rather than every single day and make any other adjustments, because we've been getting communications from people along the lines that Ms. Gibbs has been saying. So I'll just leave it that way. If we can fit something in in the next few weeks, I would hope we could, because we're into the beginning of the growing season.
Yeah, I understand.
And I say that as someone, I have a private well from, and I'm not using it, because I try to honor whatever is imposed publicly.
It doesn't, it's not, it's, I'll just say, the communications that we see, as Elaine has mentioned, there are some good points, and there are some. It may be good to have another discussion, because there's a lot of misinformation about what a single source aquifer means. So, okay, thank you, Dean. Thank you, Elaine. And I see Gloria. Your hands up.
Good evening, and thank you, Mr. Chairman. I too plan to ask you to revisit the outdoor watering ban before June, before June, when you said you would discuss it again. The ban does not seem equitable or fair, and to have it in effect in April seems a stretch. I agree with what the previous speaker stated. My understanding is that the ban applies to hand watering, as well as irrigation systems, but allows new lawns to be irrigated. Why not a moratorium on new lawns? After all, once a new lawn is established, the ban will prohibit further watering. It just doesn't make sense. Do we know what other towns are doing, and if any of it is comparable to this? I started making phone calls to other towns, and so far, no one else has a ban in effect in April, or a total ban on all watering of established lawns and shrubs, except, of course, for those who have wells. You know that I'm a big worrier about our drinking water, quality and quantity. We are told that there is plenty of water. I think Dr. Dunkinson said we only use 5% of it on an annual basis, which, of course, is replenished. Our problem is our inability to pump enough water. Thank you, and I hope you will revisit this watering ban as soon as possible.
Thank you, Gloria.
Thank you, Gloria.
Feedback, guys.
Feedback, guys.
Any other comments or questions? And I'm tired of listening to myself. Okay, thank you. We'll move on to public comments on our business agenda. Let's start with, this is just public comments beforehand. If you're, if you're, if you're involved with the, let's say, are you Angela?
No, I'm Angela. I'm the Angela.
No. Did I miss Angela? Oh, that was over there. Okay. Public comments on our, excuse me, our agenda items. I have one hand here. Anyone else? Anybody on the Teams? Okay, go ahead. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and good evening. My name's Janet Williams, and I'm here tonight with Bob Rawls. I'm a member, and he's the Chair of the Conservation Commission. Last week, the Energy and Climate Action Committee came and briefed the Conservation Commission on the investigation that they had done. You'll be hearing a lot of that this evening. For our purposes, it was limited to their investigation of the natural resources of Chatham, both in, with respect to the functions that they play in protecting the town against some of the more negative impacts of climate change, and the ways in which those resources are themselves vulnerable and at risk from those impacts that would prevent them from providing the services that they do. They gave us the results of a detailed risk assessment that they had done on the natural resources, and from that flowed a set of very specific recommendations on ways that we can strengthen the protections of the resources in this town. We concur with the findings of their risk assessment, to the extent to which these resources are truly at risk. And we support both the detailed recommendations that came out of that, as well as the overarching recommendation that the Select Board moved forward and appointed a group of people to review all the recommendations in an effort to assess and prioritize them and get ready to implement them. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Anyone online? I don't see any. Let's move ahead with our agenda. And as I mentioned, Angela. First up is a special one-day alcohol permit for the Creative Arts Center. Welcome. Just introduce yourself and just quickly.
I'm Angela Ma. I'm the Director of the Creative Arts Center.
Okay. And you're looking for a one-day special alcohol permit for the, for a certain number of days?
Yes.
Okay. I'll go right to the Board. We've done these before. Any questions or comments? Jeff?
Yeah, this is kind of a standard request every year. I've attended many of them. They're great events, well-controlled, lots of fun, a lot of art, a lot of great art, and certainly going to support it. I would offer a motion.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments? Seeing that, okay, thank you. No other discussion? None. Let's have a vote. Shereen?
Aye.
Corey?
Aye.
Dean?
Aye.
Jeff?
Ah, you don't even want to know the dates? Just kidding.
Oh, yes.
Probably spell the dates in time.
I think we really ought to say the dates. Okay. So a one-day permit for Sunday, May 15, 2022, from 4:30 to 6:00 at 154 Crowell Road. Sunday, June 5, from 4:00 to 5:30 at 154 Crowell Road. Sunday, July 10, from 4:00 to 5:30 at 154 Crowell Road, and Wednesday, July 27, from 6:00 to 8:30 at 30 Old Harbor Road. Chad.
Thank you. Jean, a modified second?
Yes.
Okay, now we'll take a vote. Shereen?
Aye.
Corey?
Aye.
Dean?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Chair says aye. Angela, good luck.
Thank you very much.
Okay, next up is our consider a recommendation on second day of a 2022 Annual Town Meeting. I'll start with our, with our Town Manager, and I was looking to see if our...
We have the moderator on.
The moderators, yeah. Bill, are you there?
I am, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, I'll start with Jill, and then I'll ask for your comments, if that works out fine.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, we're looking at still May 14, Saturday, at 1:00 PM, indoors at the Monomoy Regional Middle School, and that it starts at 1:00 PM, and depending on what time it ends, it might need to be carried over to the next day or another day. And typically, the moderator asks the voters at town meeting when they would like to adjourn to or to reconvene. And we've done some research, and the building is available to us for the entire weekend, and we could do it again Sunday at 1:00 PM. Again, at the Monomoy Middle School, we have, we have the gym, we have the small gym, we have the auditorium, so a lot of rooms reserved for us. So the question is, if the Board wants to set that date now, so voters have notice to expect to come back, again, probably I'll have the moderator weigh in on the exact process to vote that, but to put a second, or I'm sorry, another date out there if it does get continued to a second day or second night. Alternatively, it could be Monday after that. That would probably be an evening, a 6:00 or 6:30 start, and then just returning back to Sunday. I know that the preservation awards are happening at 4 o'clock on Sunday at the Atwood House, so that's the only potential conflict that we've seen. And I can defer to the moderator if he wants to add anything.
Okay. Thank you, Jill. Welcome, Bill.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And Jill, I think, expressed the options quite well. We've had a couple of conversations about a likely second session. The Select Board sets the date and time and location of the meeting, and it is technically true that the voters will vote on a second session, assuming one is necessary. But very frankly, they ordinarily follow the lead of the motion made, probably by you, Mr. Chairman, that we recess until Sunday at 1:00 PM, or Monday at 6:00 PM. Given that your Board has deemed it appropriate, and I think you were, you were correct in doing so, to meet on a week, during the day, rather, on a weekend day... rather, on a weekend day, it might be logical that we recommend to the voters that a continued session be on Sunday at 1:00 PM. Again, the voters ultimately decide, but I think they would follow the lead. And it's also, I think, appropriate to let them know in advance when it's going to be. There is, just by way of brief public announcement, there's been some discussion that I've heard about. But if we are indoors, we're going to make arrangements for at least one and maybe two rooms for people who prefer to wear masks and, and/or who are immunocompromised. So that's all I wanted to add, and I'll be happy to say anything I can beyond that.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Anybody, any questions or comments from the board? Dean, and then Jeff, and then Corey. Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Bill, we, you dropped off when you're, were telling us what the information was you were getting from the public, but I suspect it, it had to do with concern that some folks might have about being in a large group indoors. But I would favor the Sunday. I know that the, the historical awards are at 4 o'clock, but based on what occurred at the last annual town meeting when we were in, we met on Sunday, we got the business done fairly quickly. I think this is going to go into two days, and you've got the place all set up. It just makes more sense to me to do it on Sunday. Thank you.
Thank you, Dean. Jeff, I think Bill is frozen, but hopefully can hear us.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I...
I, I...
Yeah, you're going in and out, Bill. I don't know if it's us or you. Okay, let Jeff continue.
Yeah, I'd, I'd favor Sunday as well at 1:00. Again, I think the history has shown that we can be pretty efficient with our business on the second day. I do think it's going to go two days as well. I think we have many, many R60-something articles, so I think it's...
Yeah, I agree. Corey?
On the other hand, no. I would prefer Monday. My, I think, you know, in a perfect world, if we could get through it one night, even if it's a little bit longer, that would be my, my ideal preference. But I do think we have to realize that, you know, a lot of shops are opening up, small businesses, there's limited staff replaced right now. The weekend is their busiest time, and I think that we're going to be putting a lot of people in a position of either opening up their shop or coming to town meeting a second day. It, you know, it's got to deter some people. If that's acceptable to the board, that's, that's fine. But I do think having two Saturdays, two weekend days, might be a little bit tough for some of the small business shops that are operating with limited staff right now. So it is what it is. But that's why I think, you know, having a balance of, if we do go to a second night, please don't, Monday offers a little bit of a balance. So that's my, my opinion.
Okay, thanks, Corey. Shereen?
I, I agree with Corey to some degree because I, I think that if it's a nice weekend, people aren't going to be reluctant to give up two beautiful days in this, in May. However, I, I'd, I'd rather leave it up to the, the people, you know, at, at the meeting to decide. I really can't say one way or the other. I go back, back and forth. I really don't have any feeling or sense about it. But my schedule is a little different than perhaps somebody that's working, so I think I really don't have an opinion on which day it should be.
Okay, I, my, I was leaning towards Sunday, but I don't have the same, same issues that, that Corey is looking at. And I, we went through this a couple of times, and we, I'm trying to remember how we, we decided, but it, it kind of depends on how much you get done on Saturday is what it, and it, I don't think it's unreasonable for us to make a recommendation of some sort and then say it's up to the, to the, to the, to the voters. Dean, go ahead.
Well, do we have to make a decision tonight? I mean, can, Jill, do we, can we just leave it for the moderator to say at some point, do you want to keep on going? We'll get this done today on Saturday. You can go from 1:00 to 7:00 in the evening if you wanted to, I think.
Yeah, let's bring the moderator in the conversation because this was an agenda request that he had suggested.
Yeah, I see. Your hands up, Bill. I guess you're back.
Thank you. I'll, I'll try to be brief so that I don't fall off again. As, as has been noted, it's ultimately up to the voters, but by the time someone is going to make a motion to adjourn, I don't think the voters are going to be in a mood to debate it. And I think it probably would be sensible to at least give voters tonight, it's up to you, of course, but it would be helpful to them to know what is anticipated. They could vote to come back, you know, in September if they wanted to. I think that's unlikely. But if you provide the leadership of saying what is the anticipated date, they'll at least have that as, as helpful information.
Mr. Chair, I agree. As I think further about it, we have, you know, audio contractors, we have police details and so forth. So if the board is amenable to having a suggested date, you know, contingent upon, you know, the voters at town meeting agreeing, at least would give us some ability to, to plan in advance.
Okay, any comments from the board? Corey?
To follow up on that, with the police detail, does either date create a better or worse scenario with staffing and, and those resources?
So, Mr. Chair, I think because we're returning, and that was something that the moderator had just talked about, whether, you know, we will stay inside versus going to Veterans Field. As we're returning back to the middle school, it, again, is not too heavy of a lift of police details for traffic control. It's to get us, to get everyone in and get it out. With Veterans Field, there's, there's more resources that are required to address that. So again, we're, we're at this point, unless we present something different to the board at your next meeting, we're planning on an indoor town meeting. I'm, I'll, I'll concede to the Sunday if, if that seems to be the way that everybody's going.
Any other comments? If we're not unanimous, that tells some, says something, too. Okay.
I can give you one out. Do you want to just give me, you know, a sense of the board if, if, if Sunday, I'm sorry, Corey, I don't mean to cut you off.
Oh, no, no, it's fine. It's fine. I'm used to this position.
Okay.
I'd rather us just vote, and that way, you know, it's better, I mean, it is a recommendation. Any other comments or we have a motion?
I move that we appoint Sunday at 1:00 PM as the second day, should it go over into two days. Second.
Second, further discussion. Have a vote. Jeff?
Aye.
Dean?
Aye.
Corey?
Aye.
Shereen?
Aye.
And the Chair says aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you very much.
Okay, next on our agenda is an update from the Energy and Climate Action Committee. I see Bob Worchafter is here. Welcome, Bob, and you have some, you have a couple people with you, too.
I'm going to try my new glasses. I may...
Yeah, I know the problem. Make sure you introduce yourself first.
Until I get dizzy, yeah. Okay. So my name is Bob Worchafter. I'm the chairman, or I guess, of the Energy and Climate Action Committee, and with me is...
Sarah Griscum, Science Advisor at Pleasant Bay Community Boating and member of the Climate Action, Cape Cod Climate Collaborative.
And Energy and Climate Action Committee.
Thank you.
So we... Very proud of that.
We came to you three months ago with a study that the Cape Cod Commission had done about the potential costs of, of climate change and wanted to make you aware of that. And you gave us a charge to go forward and report back to you within two months. We're a little late, but we did a lot of work, so I, I hope you'll appreciate what, what we have to say to you. This is our agenda, sort of quickly going through the outline. So I'm just going to quickly go right to the, when I figure out what I do. Okay. So we were charged with looking at the current practices of the town and the committee and developing a process for addressing climate impacts and developing recommendations for town, for the town climate action. I just want to quickly remind everyone what, what the risks are to Chatham. We are looking already at extreme weather. We're going to be, experience significant sea level rise, floods, storm surge, rising temperatures, ocean acidification, and many unknowns. We're actually experiencing a lot of this right now. We're already seeing storms eroding our protective beaches and banks. We are experiencing some sea level rise, drowning our salt marshes. We're, we have warmer waters which feeds algae blooms, stresses native species. We have extreme weather. We're getting more extreme storms. We have some drought and wetland issues. Woodland ecosystems and aquifers are all being affected. Destroyed trees, increased flooding, and an increased invasion of vegetation and loss of native species. That's what we're already seeing. We need to keep our ecosystems, our natural resources, because they are the way we do remove carbon dioxide from the atmosphere. They store and sequester carbon. They protect against flooding and storm damage, provide vital wildlife habitat and food, and they're critical to the town's economic health, particularly fishing and recreation, maintain overall resilience of our community. So we need to protect our natural resources. We're, we're, will be seeing much larger coastal erosion, much more damage to homes, roads, and infrastructure, land and coastal ecosystems stressed, drinking water and coastal water degradation, and a loss of biodiversity and fisheries. And these are the things that we have to combat and, and try to minimize. This was the report from the Cape Cod Commission, and it was $50 billion through the end of the century from just the sea level rise and the storm surge, building damage, beach tourist reduced. The two numbers, the land value decreased and the building damage were done by Cape Cod, by town. So those are the, I'm sorry, the tax revenue and the building damage were done by town. So those are actual numbers for Chatham. The other three numbers are prorated by Chatham's portion of the total, but it comes to about $3 billion for Chatham alone from just the sea level rise. That doesn't count any of the, the storm damages from winds and doesn't count loss of, of ecosystems and other things like that. So what did we do over the last three months? We interviewed town staff, members of planning, Natural Resources and Conservation Commission. We surveyed, planned, and completed some climate action studies. We put together a group of volunteers to specifically look at the natural resources and determine top priorities, and we looked at what other towns, particularly those that are even more susceptible to sea rise, Nantucket and Falmouth, and what, what they've been doing. And the general idea of where we are as a town, we have a very good staff of people who are really up on all the issues in the crisis, but in talking to them, they're overwhelmed by what they have to do right now to just take care of their current situations, and they're really not looking at 10 years from now and, and the sea level rise issues that will be coming. We have a lot of interested committees that are working at climate change, talking about it, but none of them have any clear authority to, to work on this or, or to be the, the point group to deal with that. So we're going to need to put together a solutions that are coordinated across the community, including committees and staff and, and the public. And some of these, we're here to tell you, require urgent attention because if we're going to have any impact at all, we're going to have to do that now. And we'll come back to you at the end of this with, with a mission for, for us to do. I'm going to turn it over to Sarah now. She's going to talk about what the group that dealt specifically with the natural resources, what their recommendations are, what their study was.
Thank you, Bob. So it was a all group, I mean, all volunteer group that was put together, and they, they did a deep dive into the natural resources. They identified what natural resources exist in Chatham and what ecosystem services they have that minimize climate impacts. The group reviewed leading models of sea level rise, because there's a lot out there right now, and they determined that the best available model was here in Massachusetts. It's called the Mass Climate Vulnerability Model. It's used by the Department of Transportation, it's used by the Woods Hole Group, and it's really sort of like the top of the line right now. These things might change, but right now, we suggest using this model. The estimates range from three to almost eight feet rise by 2,100. But for our work, we thought, the group thought that the midpoint average of two feet of sea level rise was a good thing to, to shoot for because in terms of town planning, you know, 2050 is, is kind of be on the, on the far end of your range, of our range. We also acknowledged that storm surge will increase in frequency and intensity, and we assessed the risks, both the likelihood of something happening and the severity of it to natural resources. So this is a hazard map. The darker colors show more hazards occurring due to sea level rise. So where you see the dark red, that means there's multiple hazards that are happening there. Essentially, what you can see here with a two-foot sea level rise is that all the marshes are lost, and possibly the south side beaches are gone. It's pretty serious. And this is if nothing is done. So again, we're looking at nothing being done, and this is, this is an outcome. So how is this risk assessment done? The group of five volunteers, they were experienced in different, different parts of their, with different expertises. They used three criteria, the likelihood of something happening, severity, and the urgency. So this, you don't worry about, you know, going into detail here. What, all that I want to show is that when these five volunteers did a, did their study, they found that the top four ended up being about the marshes and the need for protecting those, those marshes because they protect us. So how do you use the risk assessment? You got to put it through a screening of feasibility. So that's how much does it cost, how much time is it going to make, is it going to take, and are there regulations that are going to prevent us from doing it? And then you also assess the multiple, multiple benefits of doing any one action. So one action can actually have multiple benefits. So you want to sort of basically get the most bang for your buck. So all the marsh, marsh, marshes gone. That's quite a shock, and, and this is what they can do. They sequester and trap a lot of carbon. They're actually one of the most concentrated carbon sinks on the earth, next to mangrove forests. They buffer the shoreline from erosion, and they trap sediment. They store floodwaters. They serve as shelter, food, and nursery for 75% of our fishery species. They depend on that habitat. And then from the land side, they filter runoff excess nutrients, and they greatly improve coastal water quality. So those are our marshes. So these are some of our priorities that we came up with, the group came up with, volunteer group. Update the Pleasant Bay Sea Level Rise Report that was done, put out in '17. Things have changed. We know more. There's been some interesting research coming down from the Center for Coastal Studies on behavior of the outer, outer beach. We should create a coastal resilient zone and restrict development within these protected areas, much broader area. We should assess and evaluate the effects of this projected sea level rise to our south-facing beaches and dunes. Those are really going to be impacted. And really, we need to preserve and prepare for the need to preserve our salt marshes and prepare for the need for these salt marshes to migrate. Because if you, if they have an area to migrate into, we can preserve them more easily. There's other options as well. People have been doing research on thin layer deposition. So there's many options, not many options, but there are options out there that have been tested and, and seem to work well. been tested and seem to work well. So we need to accommodate these migration, find new approaches for protecting the marshes, and investigate potential to acquire and purchase lands that can be used for migrating the marshes and that are vulnerable. And that's my part. Bob, take it away.
So there are two other areas that we, as a town, have to deal with. One of these is our own carbon footprint and reducing it. There is a new building code coming before the town in the next year. We have three options as to what to do. One of them is to retrench and go back to the standard code, which would take a vote. We could stay where we are with the stretch code, but we're recommending that we move to a net zero building code in the next year's annual meeting when it comes up. So the Energy Committee will be working hard to help that as we did help with the stretch code before. This is an interesting one to me, having, and Peter, having been involved in Mass Save for the last 15 years. Chatham is among the worst performing towns in the state. We are at 19% of Chatham homes have participated in a energy program, any energy program with Mass Save. The average for the state towns is 35%. We are so low that we have been designated an environmental justice community, even though we have no reason to be considered an environmental justice community. This is an embarrassment to the town that we're performing so low, and we need to really take action. The business community is about at the average, but it's still only 20% of the businesses have participated in a Mass Save program. This is a free service that we've all paid for on our utility bills. The fact that so few of us have taken action in it, again, I think is an embarrassment. We also have to begin to accelerate conversion to electric vehicles and increase charging sites. The Energy Committee's been working very hard to try to get that first charging system into the town before this summer. Again, I think it would be a bad thing to have our tourists come here with their electric cars and have to go to another town to charge them. But we, as a town and as individuals, should begin to make the conversion to electric vehicles, and we're going to need to deal with our housing issues. To have people commuting to work here from off Cape is not a sustainable use of carbon. We need to consider that as part of our sustainability. We also have to deal with our roads and our infrastructure investment and start to prioritize how we're going to deal with the roads. Chatham Town, Jill and Tad are working hard to acquire a grant to help identify the issues and impacts for low-lying roadways. That will be an important study that will help determine the priorities. This needs to be part of a climate action plan as to how we're going to invest in our roadways, which roadways are we going to build up, which road areas are we going to let go away. We also have to figure out ways to begin to lower our transportation-related carbon footprint. We need to come up with better solutions for all the cars that come into the town every day in the summer, trying to figure out ways to minimize the amount of idling cars that are spending their time in Chatham. So what does our committee want to do? We're going to review and prioritize the recommendations for action. Over the next three months, we're going to continue interviews. We have some more groups that we have yet to talk to that we want to include to find out how they're going to fit into the bigger picture. And we want to develop an implementation schedule for actions and come back to you with a timeline and some better idea of what the responsibilities and who should take responsibility for what actions. We need you, the Select Board, to give us some authority to continue to work on this with, have these interviews. We've tried to minimize our use of time with staff, because we know they're busy, but they've been very cooperative, and we appreciate that. And we want to come back to you in three months and give you our next update. So the town, we need four things. We need to reduce our carbon footprint. We need to strengthen protection of the salt marshes and other natural resources. We need to prioritize roads and other infrastructure investments, and we really seriously need to educate the community, encourage participation in all of these things. What we need from you, these are our immediate priority recommendations for the Select Board. We need the town manager to convene a cross-department working group to bring this all together. It's more than the Energy Committee alone, because there's too many committees and too much staff, and it would be more efficient to have a cross-department group. We know that there was a sustainability manager that was going to be hired, but when we talked about that with people, it was, over the next couple of years, was mostly going to focus on housing. We think that its sustainability coordinator is going to have to take some of their time for 25% to 50% in dealing with these future issues. Those are the two things that we're going to do immediately, and over those next three months, we want to help you in the rest of the year, develop a climate action and resilience plan that will strengthen. We're going to come up with a list of regulations and bylaws that we're going to need to pass over the next year or two to help pull this all off, and we're going to initiate some strong public outreach and get input from the community to make this a cooperative plan and action plan for the town. And I thank you, that's all I have.
Thank you, Bob. I have just a couple of comments first. First briefing was sobering. This is beyond sobering, but it's something that we all, I think we've all known and realized. I just want to make one other comment, too, and I'm with you when it comes to the audits and the energy efficiency audits for the homes. I mean, I'm not going to use this as an excuse. Prior to COVID and then two or three, four years before that, the funding that was available for Chatham was being used for energy efficiency and home audits. And we did have, we were one of the first to have Capelike Compact come into our business area and used as a model, and it went up to 20%, which was really a larger increase. But to put this in context of Massachusetts state law and all of that kind of stuff, because I'm involved with Capelike Compact, there's the Massachusetts Climate Policy that was approved, and you're probably very familiar with it a number of years ago. And it's an act creating, and I want to say this, next-generation roadmap for Massachusetts Climate Policy. And what it did for organizations and for Mass Save and for Capelike Compact, it requires the electrification of 1 million homes by 2050, interesting, same number, right? And also 300 to 400 million square feet of commercial building space to require electrification. And what that required now for organizations that do Mass Save, like Capelike Compact, the goals not only include energy efficiency and how efficient you can be so that we don't spend more money to build electrification plants and that we save energy. We have state goals where it comes to gas reduction goals of 474,000, a reduction of emissions and metric tons of CO2e, which I always liked that. But for Capelike Compact, that's 34,509. So our whole energy efficiency program is integrated now with a carbon reduction plan, and you get evaluated on all that. So this is kind of a state initiative to begin with, and never mind just the state. It's a problem for Chatham. Just a couple of comments on our coastal resiliency. How many years ago did we pass a, we passed because it was provided by a flood plain? Flood plain did not include sea rise, and it goes right behind the Orpheum. And if you take a look at the charts over there, it does damage to our downtown, considering moving on to 2050. You can say, you know, there'll be some that'll say, well, maybe that's not realistic, or it's unrealistic, or whatever. The point is, there's a lot of data behind it, and we ought to consider it, you know, seriously. Marshes, I remember the first thing I learned when I came to Chatham is a guy who didn't spend much time on the water except to go to the beach and get in a boat. Marshes are the breeding place for everything. I mean, it was, it took one simple course, and our salt marshes are more important than almost anything else, and I'm somewhat exaggerating, but not a lot. And I think it's important that we do this. An organization that's going to cut across the town, I always like those because they're difficult, one, they usually get things done, but they're difficult to do. And how we do that is, you know, is a question, you know, Jill and I have spoke about it a little bit. Here's the point that I think you made, which is, you put it in a better light than I have. We talk about housing, and we talk about conservation, and we have a conservation committee, and we have our housing committees, right? And right now, we all know it, there's an argument on a piece of property, whether or not we should put housing on it, or whether it should be conserved. And, you know, Nantucket has an organization that put those two things together, and they look across the whole plain and say, where should we do housing and where should we be conservative? But you brought up the point, which is a good one, I've heard you say it before, and it stuck this time. Having people commute somewhere else to come here increases, I mean, you're driving a car, you're putting carbon into the area. Take a look at, if you didn't go to any large city, where I was a couple of them, and you commute, smog is terrible. And why? It's because it's from cars. Now, you move towards electric cars, you won't have that problem, you know, as much. So I think that's a good point. Housing, conservation, it's a balance, and I say that all the time, and it's easy to say, but housing and conserving what we have, you have to look at a bigger picture, and it's always a systems issue. I think I pontificated enough, but I think it's an important issue. How we go about it, I think, is something that we're going to have to address. So anybody on the board have any questions? Shereen?
No questions, but thank you so much for bringing a light to all of this, as you have been doing, Sarah, you've been doing this for a long time, and Bob as well. So, you know, I think that having myself fished with my husband for many years and seeing the changes on the water, you know, we worked with Center for Coastal Study doing research on ocean acidification back in the 2000s, and we've watched what's been happening to the Nantucket sand ecosystem. Its bottom is not the same as it used to be. And we've got, you know, climate change that is impacted with the storms and the erosion that we see on the Barrier Beach, and all that sand that's shifting in and in. If you just look at Lake Harding's Beach and any of the areas, it's just filling up with sand, and we're getting more, the water, we're just getting more and more sand, and that's not healthy for the marshes that are along Bucks Creek and down by Eel River. And those are really important, low-lying areas of residences that, you know, are going to be impacted. Corey, your family's lived down there a long time. And so I'm really interested in learning more about efforts that have been made with marsh restoration and mitigation. There was in the news recently, I think it was a couple of days ago, I was watching where a town in Chesapeake is actually getting, in 10 years, will no longer exist because it'll be underwater. And you only need to look at Louisiana and how the hurricanes just annihilate New Orleans because all that marshland was destroyed by the oil companies that were trying to put their big ships in there. I'm really, really happy to be here in this conversation and want to keep this going. When I look at this, this is a cost that's going to be impactful to our municipality as far as what it's going to cost to staff up, ramp up, and do this kind of work. And so we're, right now, we're obviously facing capacity issues as a town with staff. And I just, I guess it'd be interesting to see what that bigger plan would look like so that we can move forward with all these great ideas to protect our coastline and to do the right thing around the climate crisis that we're in. So I really want to continue the conversation. The immediate priorities are pretty robust, and I guess, from Jill's perspective, I'd love to hear your perspective on what that would look like to do working groups and appointing a sustainability coordinator that would move these actions forward.
Go ahead, Jill, if you have any, or anybody else speak beforehand, or do you want to hear from Jill?
I asked a question, yeah.
Yeah, I got it.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Chair. So what's interesting with our town employees, that this is a very compatible priority for them as well, and there's a lot of interest in this. And so it's been a couple of years since we've had, you know, an employee working group on this, and I think that we've, since we've hopefully moved past COVID and getting back to our core values and priorities, I think this is going to be very interesting. So the position that I had proposed is a Housing and Sustainability Director. What I had originally envisioned is, because of the upcoming housing projects, that would be a priority, but I don't know yet if that's going to be a 40-hour position for just housing, and that's why we had included the sustainability provision of it, and to help out other staff in other departments. I know there's been a priority for vehicle charging stations. It's a priority for me, it's just we had some delays with that installation that we're hoping to do. So I think in the next couple of months, we're going to be able to ramp up, and if I can get fully staffed and possibly work with the board to redirect some resources, I think this would be a really interesting project for someone, and I think that town employees would want to participate.
Thank you, Jill.
Thank you, Jill. That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Corey, your hand, and then Dean.
Sure. First of all, thank you very much for the presentation, both of you. Very much appreciated. No, my only comment is, I think, I appreciate the recommendations. I think that probably more directed to the board and the town manager, is we've got to set a calendar of certain benchmarks, in X month, a month, or two months, or three months from now, the road, we've got to touch base on where things are proceeding, follow up another two months after that, follow up with another, you know, two months from that, so we keep the conversation fresh and on track, because I think we, I would be surprised if we're all not, acknowledge, you know, this is very important to the community, Chatham specifically. But I want to make sure we hit certain benchmarks, that we can keep this conversation upfront and continue reviewing and checking and assessing and looking for resources, et cetera, the whole bunch, and keep it moving forward, because I think that is more important, just not acknowledging it, but to fall through with it. So that is my main comment, supporting a fall-through on this. Thank you.
Thank you, Corey. Dean?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Bob and Sarah, for the presentations, and thank you, Janet, for your committee's interest in this, and I thank your entire committee, the newly-designated Energy and Climate Action Committee. I just had a couple of questions. Maybe Sarah can answer this, because you mentioned that there were five volunteers. I'm just curious to know who they were, if...
The five volunteers?
Yeah.
Kristen Andrus, Jane Harris, Janet Williams, DeeDee Holt, and myself.
Okay. Well, I think we know the credibility of the people that did that, I think, from those names.
And I really think that's a strength that Chatham has, that it really has a group of retired or still-working volunteers who have knowledge in this area. We're very fortunate to have people like that on this committee. I'm an energy guy, I don't know any of the... I, I'm an energy guy, I don't know any of this, or I'm beginning to, but we need to make sure that we use those people too, in, in whatever, going forward. It's, it's part of our recommendation to continue to use them.
Great. My next question, the net zero ready code, who's developing that code? Is that state thing?
Yeah, D O E R is, is gonna probably, in, it's supposed to have come out, come out in October, it will be, there, it will be a lot stricter than the existing code, but there is the possibility that a town could say, no, we don't want to stay on the stretch code, we want to go back to the standard code, then they could vote for that in, in a town meeting. But they also have the option to vote for a net zero code. The net zero code is really the same as the stretch code, but the, every building that's built has to have all of the facilities to go solar and to, to go electric. So it, it will just be wired for a solar, you don't have to put the solar in, you don't have to put the storage in, but you have to have it as part of the plan for the building when you build it. And it would be, be about, I think about 20, 25% more efficient than, than the building code right now, so.
Do we know whether some of the surrounding towns have adopted the stretch code?
Almost every town in Massachusetts now has adopted the stretch code. It's, it's less than 20% that haven't, so, but the stretch code at this point is not much different than what the standard construction is. So it needed, it needed to be upgraded.
One of your priorities under the carbon footprint, on the carbon footprint slide, was to require that affordable housing be built near activity centers. Could, could you elaborate a little bit on that? Because obviously, we have such limited inventory of places to put affordable housing, and I'm just wondering, what, what do you mean by that?
But it was more, I, I mean, it, to me, it means affordable housing here and not affordable housing in, in Plymouth, because we, you know, this is where we need it, this is where the people work. And so, that's what, that was my intention. I, I know that Sarah put that on, and she may have a different interpretation, but...
Yes. Go ahead, Sarah.
I just wanted to mention that it was the conservation, the Cape Cod Commission that had put in their recommendations for screening any action, any climate action, equity was at the top of that. So for vulnerable populations, they didn't want, you know, all the, all the folks that can afford it to have their solar, their battery storage, all their Teslas and whatnot. They wanted it to be equitable. So affordable housing, they highly recommended affordable housing be built in the area of, of activity, meaning a downtown area, or where there was easy bus access, where there was sewer connectivity and all of that. So it was really from the concert, the Cape Cod Commission that recommended it in their, in their climate impact, climate action plan. They're really pushing for that. So I, I thought that should be...
Well, that's what I was getting at, because I was...
They're all connected. They're all connected, and, and so you, like, I can't remember if it was Shereen said, you look at the whole picture, and you, and you try to put together a plan that includes all of it.
Right. Yeah, I think we have to be adaptable where we locate affordable housing in terms of transportation and infrastructure as well. I mean, you know, we're a small town, we have, as I said, very limited opportunities to, to locate affordable housing, and we do have to make sure that those features of infrastructure and other amenities, you know, can be nearby. If they're not there now, that they would be there in the future. And I, just a couple more. The, the working group that you were talking about in your final slide, I mean, the town manager certainly has the authority to do that now on her own. She, she can and has convened working groups in the past, and I think, you know, we can invite her to do that, but she has more flexibility in terms of how that group operates than if we impose it. And she's already talked about, Jill's already talked about the sustainability coordinator, so I won't go there. But again, thank you very much, I, you know, I, I think the idea, I know Corey talked about certain follow-ups, I think at least a quarterly report would be a good thing to this board. Thank you.
We're committed to that. Jeff?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, folks, to Kristen, and Jan, and Janet, DeeDee, Sarah, Bob, nice job. I mean, a couple of months ago, I think we charged you with coming back to us with kind of a, an outline of a template of a vision, and you've done that, and, and I think it's very important that you continue to do that. We've always come at it kind of from a coastal resiliency perspective, I've never looked at a carbon footprint and, and a salt marshes as the best sink in the world, and there's so many other things to be thoughtful about. So I think to not be thoughtful going forward is, is going to be to our own detriment. So we need to be very persistent and very thoughtful. And I certainly would be supportive of, of any, you know, interdisciplinary effort that Jill would put together and that you guys might have a hand in, in crafting and recommending, we'd certainly, I'd certainly be very supportive. And I think that, you know, when you look at the Outer Beach, I certainly worry about the Outer Beach all the time, I see the washovers all winter, the storms are getting more acute, our salt marshes probably are, are at, at risk, and I'm not so sure I know what to do about salt marshes, but, or about rising sea level, but to, again, to, to put our head in the sand, to pull an ostrich, as I like to call it, is, is not going to be acceptable, given where we are located, and we're surrounded in three sides by, by water, so. Really applaud your effort, I look forward to, to hearing you come back. I had two specific questions. Number one, it was one for Jill about charging stations, I kind of thought that was teed up and we were, we were kind of good to go, just kind of want to know where that is, at charging stations. Number two was, who is the Environmental Justice Committee? Just shed some light there, and I, I just wanted to comment, I have had one of those audits, and it was phenomenal. And I've said it here before, and I'll say it again, the Mass Save Audit is phenomenal. They do an incredible job working with rise engineering, et cetera. It's very low cost and really returns a whole lot to a homeowner, so. I really, really, I would plug it again and again and again, I know Peter's plugged it many times, but as have I, so. Those are my questions and comments, I really appreciate your efforts.
Yeah, well, let me address the second one first, is that it, again, every person who's paid an electric or a gas bill has paid into a fund, and this fund is to, to do these audits, so that we don't have to build new facilities. The fact that so few people in Chatham have, have done that, maybe because they figure they're a rent, they're renting the place out, they don't need to, to worry about that, but that's income that they, they have to pay the electric, they particularly pay the electric and gas bills. So they, as owners, should, should be doing this. We have trouble getting landlords who don't pay their electric and gas bill to cooperate across the country. That's where the economic justice comes from, is that there's a bunch of people who pay their electric bills, who don't control their buildings, or who are low-income or don't speak the language. That was the original group that we designated as the most needy and should be part of the environmental justice. The, the Department of Public Utilities didn't use that advice, but used the participation rate as the determination as to which towns would be designated as environmental justice. So Chatham, and I think three other towns on the Cape, who are not, don't fit those descriptions that I gave, are in that group, and they're, you know, they're being, they're being put up to, to improve their, their participation rate. So we'll, we'll, we'll be getting extra assistance from the, from Cape Light to, to make sure that Chatham doesn't have that record come two years from now.
Good, thank you. Thank you.
You want to talk electrification, then I have a comment.
Sure. So we had relied on Eversource to do the electrical upgrade at the Main Street parking lot, and then we have also a grant funding for employee charging stations. So I, I think we're at the last mile with Eversource, and I, I can report back to the board on what the project plan timeline is. I don't have that with me, but I, I know that it's getting close. So we did receive a grant for the charging stations, and that would be at downtown 549 Main Street, but also we had a grant in, for the annex parking lot, too. So I can get back to you with more details, and there might be other locations that we receive grants for as well.
That'd be great, Joe, just a quick follow-up, will we have anything you think by the summer?
That we're, we're still in April, in my calendar, I'm hoping that we have something, but I, I don't want to commit to anything yet. Let me check back with the team, and then I can, I can send an email or provide another agenda item.
Super, thank you.
Dean?
Yeah, Jill, I can't remember, does the Eldridge Garage Project article include a charging station? Because I know that was part of the plan.
Yes.
It's more than one. Three. Yeah, we, we complained that they only had one the first time.
But that's an article that's before town meeting?
Yes.
Okay. Thanks.
Just, Jeff, on, in the Environmental Justice Community? Committee? No, it's a community.
It's a community.
Yeah, but, but we are one. I think there are more than just three towns, because I just saw a briefing from Cape Light Compact, came back from DPU. We're on there. And, and it, what it means is that we're, we get a lot of attention, and this is how it was presented in some ways. It's interesting the way they, they came up with it. What, what Bob said is correct, but we're, we're in a town where we have the problems within Cape Light Compact on the Cape are at two extremes. Those large homes that are second homeowners, that are rentals, you know, like the rental community, and the underserved community, you know, the, the folks that, that can't afford to, to do something. We have had programs to address the, the lower-income folks, and that's, that's moving ahead, but we have a tough time with second homeowners or with rental communities and landlords who, who, you know, they, they, they're doing, they're, they're paying their bills, but they're not taking, taking a, a, taking advantage of a lot of the Cape Light Compact or Mass Save programs. Cape Light Compact put in a program that said, if you're a renter, you can get it, and it's hard to do. But anyway, there are programs that are there. So that this, this whole issue is not a, yeah, it, it is, it is, it's embarrassing that we are there, but at the same time, you're going to get a lot of help.
Yeah.
And it upsets me that we were there, of all of what we have done for, for whatever time. But let me get back to Bob.
Can I, can I just say, the energies, energy committee, component of my committee, will be dealing with that directly in our next meetings, as what we as a town need to do, to wake up and, and get those people, what things we can do to let the second homeowners and others know what they, that this is available.
Yeah, and I appreciate Bob Minor coming to the Cape Light Compact, giving himself up to speed, which is good, it's helpful. You asked for a couple of things, and I, just to go over it, you need from the select board continuing authority to proceed with your, with your planning. I, I think there's a consensus, please do. Second, a scheduled periodic update, I think, obviously come back in three months, even sooner if you have something, but, and then the two highlights, I think, were discussed. authorized town manager convene cross-departmental working group, and appoint a sustainability coordinator, you got the message. Jill and I have been talking about that for a little while, and, and we're in the process of hiring, so we'll see how that works. But it's, thank you. Did anyone else have any comments? Thank you very much, Bob.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is a vote for a recommendation in a town meeting of the 2022 citizens petition. Thad Aldridge, Article 60, has to do with tenting and conservation. Is Thad here?
Good evening.
There you are. Okay, welcome, Thad.
Oh, thank you. For the record, I'm Thad Aldridge, I'm from West Chatham, and I've been involved with the Scouts for most of my life. I had a hiatus there, and I got re-involved a few years ago when my son joined the Cub Scouts. A few years before I got re-involved, the leadership was trying to reopen the camp over at Goose Pond. They went to town staff, they went through, they were getting nowhere. And so I, I took the reins, I started a zoning bylaw, COVID hit, we then tabled it, and then I quickly put it together for this town meeting. The idea is for municipal conservation zoned land to put, get the zoning bylaw out of the way. The Conservation Commission already has rules in place for tent camping, only with written permission. We went to the planning board last night, and they had a few very instructive suggestions that we would like to amend on town meeting floor, to include that tent camping will be temporary only, no more than five contiguous days, and also a minimum of 50 contiguous acres of MC-zoned property would be required for tent camping. That would really single it out to just the Goose Pond complex and the town forest west of, of Martin Road. There was an objector last evening who actually lives next to our 60 zone land, so the camping that goes on, on his neighboring property is completely illegal, and this bylaw would not enable any, any permission to be granted for that. So if there are questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Corey?
Thank you, Thad. Now, I watched the, the planning board's public hearing on this, so I think for tonight's, for tonight's, our action is almost kind of simplified, because the sentiment was the philosophical, getting the Boy Scouts, Cub Scouts, all those organizations back into, into tenting and camping was supportive, but the mechanics, the language that was currently before the planning board last night and for us tonight, had needed some adjustments. So, and if I heard you correctly in your opening statements, that you're looking at doing some amendments on the town meeting floor, which are not before us tonight. So I, I do think philosophically, I would like to see, you know, a path that would allow the campers, you know, the COs, the Boy Scouts, the Cub Scouts, to do camping legally, I guess. But are you, I don't know, follow me through the chair, is there going to be follow-up with Town Council? I know that was recommended last night with a planning board and community development to kind of work on some language amendments? Is that part of what you just mentioned earlier?
I think it would be frowned upon if I were to reach out to Town Council.
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead.
Actually, I have notes from our town planner, and there was recommendations from the planning board members that Town Council and staff review and find an alternative way to allow tent camping by the Scouts. So we can certainly work with Thad, if, if Thad, you provide us maybe your suggested motion, we can convene a teams meeting and discuss it with you and Town Council.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, that's a good point, Corey. Dean, go ahead.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, just to follow up on what Jill was saying, we, we got an email late today from the town planner. I'd like to read it, because it says that the planning board's meeting, April 25th, 22, 2022 meeting, "The planning board held the required MGL public hearing for the proposed citizens petition zoning bylaw amendment. The board voted unanimously not to recommend the proposed article to town meeting. The board did express that they are very supportive of the intent of the bylaw, however, they felt that the bylaw as currently proposed is too broad with the allowance of general tent camping on all municipal conservation land with not enough safeguards in place. The members recommended that Town Council and staff review and find an alternative way to allow tent camping by the Scouts from the west area of Goose Pond." So I guess the question for me, I was certainly prepared to support this article with a favorable recommendation tonight until I saw this communication. I don't know what we do, but if there is some prospect that between now and, and May, is it the 14th? That the sponsor and, and staff working with Town Council could come up with some changes, then, you know, that would allow them to go forward with a favorable vote at town meeting, but I'm not sure what, what we, this board should do this evening.
Jeff, did you have?
I don't think there's anything to move right now.
Yeah.
I mean, I'm certainly supportive philosophically, but certainly want to hear the planning board's concerns and, and to see what's, what an article might look like, you know, cleaned up.
Yeah, I understand what they were saying, too. I was watching part of it on TV. Jill?
So the board will have, your last meeting before town meeting is May 10. So the board will have, your last meeting before town meeting is May 10th. And so I'm, I'm pretty sure Thad might want to have his motion squared away by then. And that's something that we can report back and, and have you provide a vote on that. And that would be Tuesday, May 10th.
Okay, Thad, any comments? You know, I think in we, there's a consensus of the board that we'd like to see this go on, but it'd be difficult to vote given what was just provided by the planning board.
Understood completely. We'll get the draft information to the town manager and see if we can set this up before the meeting.
Okay. And we can make sure it's on our agenda too also, you know.
Yes, we have a placeholder item anyway, so we'll make sure we list that.
Okay, thank you, Thad.
Thank you much.
Yeah, Thad. Okay, next up is a consider request from the Montemoy Regional School District to submit a joint Chatham Harwich a letter regarding the major, Montemoy Regional School District regional agreement. I thought I saw Scott up. Is Merritt? Let me see. Yeah, is Meredith here? I didn't see you.
Yeah, I'm, I'm.
Scott, I see you, Scott, yeah.
And so is Michael McMillan, our business manager. And I, I thought I saw Meredith Henderson, our school committee chair there for a while. So, so we, you know, we sent to both your board, the Harwich board, the Harwich Finance Committee and the Chatham Finance Committee, a draft letter that, you know, that really, you know, sort of states that, that we're all in these changes of these, for the, the proposed changes to the regional agreement together. Last night, the Harwich board unanimously supported the, the letter. Our committee has unanimously supported, supported it. The, it's got support, you know, full support from the finance committees in both towns. And yours is the last board that we're bringing it to.
Okay, thank you, Scott. Do you want to read it or? Corey, you want to read it for the letter or I can read it, whichever one you prefer. Okay, well, let's read it and then we'll see if we have any comments, Scott.
All right.
Thank you.
Thanks, Peter. Dear Chatham and Harwich taxpayers and voters, after a decade of re-regionalization, it's time for our school district to revisit the original regional agreement and make appropriate updates. At annual town meeting in both Chatham and Harwich this year, attendees will be asked to vote on proposed changes to the Montemoy regional agreement. The superintendent has raised a concern of an unintended fiscal inequity on how the language of the current regional agreement handles assessments of the elementary schools. The smaller Chatham Elementary School has much higher per pupil operating costs than the larger Harwich Elementary School. And under the agreement's current assessment methodology, Harwich taxpayers end up increasingly subsidizing the operations of Chatham Elementary. The most substantive change proposed to the regional agreement has each town paying for the cost to operate its own elementary school. In doing so, Harwich taxpayers provide fiscal relief, fiscal relief, and Chatham families are insured continued operation of a high quality elementary program at Chatham Elementary. By having each town pay for its own elementary school, Chatham's FY 23 assessment would increase by $739,747 and Harwich will decrease by $739,747, therefore, therefore, thereby eliminating the unintended subsidy that happens under the current assessment methodology. These proposed changes to the regional agreement and assessment methodology therein have been supported unanimously by the Montemoy Regional School Committee, both the Chatham and Harwich Select Boards, and both the Chatham and Harwich Finance Committees. The proposed changes are a win-win for both towns. More information about the changes to the regional agreement can be found on the school district website. Within the town meeting warrant in both towns, the current regional agreement and all proposed changes are provided in a side by side format along with explanation of each change. We encourage your support for the article, for the articles at town meeting. Sign Montemoy Regional School Committee and in this draft form says Chatham Board of Selectmen, Harwich Board of Selectmen, Chatham Finance Committee and Harwich Finance Committee.
Thank you, thank you, Corey. I appreciate it. Shereen and then Jeff.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm supportive of the letter. I think it shows solidarity and a good direction for the town. I think a lot of times we've been, it's misunderstood that Harwich and, and Chatham had been locking heads on, on a few things in the past. And we were, the school committee and superintendent and the town managers have worked really hard on moving this forward, as have the boards to, to get a better understanding of that. So I'm going to support the letter going in.
Jeff, are you, okay, let me go Jeff and then back to Corey.
Yeah, I'm certainly going to support the letter as well. It's been well vetted in every, you know, with the Chatham Select Board, the Harwich Select Board, the school committee. We had a great session with our community, if not once or twice. And I, it's, you know, we were addressing an inequity that certainly was unintended at, at the region's inception. And I would certainly, I certainly do support it and I would move support. That's a motion.
Thank you. Corey?
Uh, just, just more an edit, properly, properly identified Chatham Select Board instead of Board of Selectmen. Doesn't Harwich also go by Select Board also, or have they not changed? Not yet. They're Bush the Board of Select, okay. So this, just Chatham's edit.
All right.
I'm going to second Jeff's motion.
Okay, any other comments? I don't have any problem. I think it's the, the right thing to do. The, the question that still comes up, I did get receive a question about it, has to do with, you know, the cost per pupil is higher in Chatham than it is in Harwich, so why don't we move people over from Harwich to Chatham? That doesn't change a thing. The, the way, the, the way, the way that the numbers work, it's based upon the total population. So if you move them around, it's a zero sum game. And I may be overstating that, but I don't think so. We've gone through that. So I think it's the right thing to do. So we have a motion and a second discussion, none. Shereen?
Aye.
Corey?
Aye.
Dean?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Chair says aye. Thank you very much, Scott. Mike?
Thank you.
Okay, next is, excuse me, use of community center for private functions and social events with alcohol. This was, this yours, Shereen?
Yeah, I had the agenda.
Go ahead.
Okay, thanks, Mr. Chair. I, this came up a couple of times when we were reviewing different events at the community center that we really weren't sure what the policy was around the use of alcohol in, at the community center. And so I asked Shauna to look into the events that had occurred there and how many had, you know, requested an alcohol use. It seemed to be smaller than we, I had originally thought. But I guess the question is, has arisen is, is this an appropriate use of the building? And number two, in reviewing the insurance issues around the town's liability, apparently we have a host liquor liability clause for events such as what has happened. So it is appropriate. But one of the things that is noted is that if we, that we have been doing is if we approve a liquor license for an event, the entity can, can, it says can purchase a liquor liability policy for the event. And it can be written to include that the town is insured. It says can, it doesn't say should or, or is supposed to, or however that legal language is supposed to be written. But these, that's what's on the table here is, is this an appropriate? I guess my question to the board is, is this an appropriate use of the space? And are, are the people that are using it complying in, in the proper way with insurance?
Okay, any comments? Dean?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, thank you, Shereen, for bringing this forward. My recollection is that the groups that have petitioned to use the space is a mixture of nonprofit and I'd say it's probably mostly nonprofit, but there've been some, I don't think that fit that category. And I don't think it's been very many over the course of a given year, but we have the requests. And I don't think we have been requesting a certificate of insurance, naming us as an additionally insured. This, we've gotten this, emailed this out just, just at the beginning of the meeting from our insurance agent who's recommending that there be some sort of a contract in place with a hold harmless clause. And there's some language that the carrier is, is recommending along the lines of the Corinne, Shereen, I'm sorry. Shereen just talked about in terms of they're getting a one day liquor license or whatever. So probably we should, I mean, I don't, have, have we allowed all alcohol or just beer and wine on the premises?
I attended, let me, let you speak if not, I attended one event where all alcohol was there, but it was controlled. It was a nonprofit organization that used it one time.
So maybe, maybe what we should do is ask staff, Shauna, to, to draft.
Shauna's in the meeting.
Okay, she's on. To draft something with, review by town council. Could be perhaps nothing more than a page that people would be required to sign when they come forward with that. So that would be my suggestion.
Shauna, you're on. You have any comment? I see you.
I would just suggest that the requirement to purchase their own liquor liability policy, naming that the town as an additionally insured may, may actually eliminate the desire to use the space just because it would be another hurdle for some fairly small nonprofits to, to get through.
Corey?
Just to follow up on that, according to the email received from our insurer, these policies, you know, can obviously range depending on the number of days and attendees and stuff, but they range from basic ones, $300 to $500. So that cost alone may deter some activities. So my, my philosophy is we got to do what's the best interest of the town from an insurance perspective. Make sure we dot our i's, cross our t's. And if this is the path we need to take to cover ourselves appropriately, that's what we need to do. So that's, that is our duty, so.
Okay, any other comments? The only thing I.
Agreed.
Yeah, the question is, do we, do we do that or do we just say no alcohol? Is there a preference by the board? I mean, the, the event I went to had a number of people, it was well done and you control it, you know. And so that wasn't a problem, but, but at the same time, go ahead. I'll let Shereen and then Jeff.
My thought is that we've already set that precedent that, that it's been allowed. But I think that what we need to do is have the restrictions and the protections in place that we'll see it through in a more successful way.
Agreed again.
Whether it deters it or not, I mean, you know.
Okay.
Totally agree.
I don't have a problem with that.
Hi.
Ones were okay. I need a motion.
Mr. Chairman? I move that the licensing agent work with the town council to develop a form of contract as suggested by the town's insurance agents.
Second.
Okay, that's sufficient. Any other discussion? I think it is. Okay, Shereen?
Aye.
Corey?
Aye.
Dean?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Chair says aye. Okay, thank you. All right, and the final agenda item is the town manager performance evaluation. And the way we usually do this is I read the evaluation and then it gets posted online. Correct?
Yes.
Okay. All right, in each year, this is, as, this is the 2021 annual performance evaluation of the town manager Jill R. Goldsmith. It's been presented by the chair, Peter Kokolos, April 26th, 2022, for the record. In each year since her hire in 2011, the town manager has been evaluated annually with a performance evaluation instrument developed collaboratively by the select board and the town manager. To assist the board in preparing the evaluation, town manager Jill R. Goldsmith provided a summary of her accomplishments and activities occurring in the 2021 review period. Under, under the board approved methodology, Ms. Goldsmith's performance was evaluated on six general managerial categories. One is personal and professional. Second is board support or relations. Third is financial management. Fourth is personal management and/or organizational leadership. Next is community leadership and public relations. And the sixth is the town operating infrastructure. Participating select board members then awarded, quote, "performance points," unquote, "based on a total of 38 different subcategories, using a four-point rating scale for each. Four points equals excellent and highly commendable. Three is strong performance. Two is satisfactory or acceptable. One point, improvement needed and NO, not observed." Based on this point system, Ms. Goldsmith was awarded a composite score of 3.72 that indicates strong collective praise from the select board for her ongoing high performance and excellent managerial skills. She continues to rank in the scoring range of strong performance to excellent and/or high commendable, highly commendable. It is noteworthy that Ms. Goldsmith received scores of 3.50 or greater in 29 of the 38 subcategories, indicating performance firmly in the high end of the, quote, "strong," unquote, category and received highly respectable composite scores of 3.20 and above in the remaining nine subcategories. 2021 Select Board comments on the town manager's performance evaluation. That's the title of the paragraph. "In addition to the metric measurements cited above, individual select board members were also encouraged to provide their own written comments and make personal observations regarding Ms. Goldsmith's performance in the past year. Select board members also were provided the opportunity to meet with or speak with Ms. Goldsmith in connection with their individual evaluations. Examples of the comments provided follow according to the category. First category is personal and professional. Jill continues to maintain the highest standards of honesty and integrity. A consummate professional, she is fair and leads by example, not one to avoid difficult problems or crises. She is respectful and engaged leader. Example, during the December blizzard, Jill worked at the community center until late in the evening. She is a leader on statewide committees and well respected by senior state representative officials." Next comment. "Encourage the town manager to facilitate community discussions to address concerns of the airport and airport operations." Next comment. "Jill has re-vanaged the town very effectively during this past year. There have been numerous municipal challenges and Jill and her team have addressed them proactively." Next category, board support and relations. Item D, which is a subcategory, is why I feel numeric ratings are arbitrary. The expectation that the town manager should share everything about the government and community information to the board is not feasible. However, whenever asked, the town manager is always forthcoming and informed." Next comment. "Excellent system to discuss and/or evaluate annual select board and town manager goals. Concerned with backlog of select board and citizen agenda requests not being addressed in a timely manner." Next comment. "I felt pressed for time as we finalized the warrant this year. We had many long meetings to discuss weighty issues too late in the year. I felt rushed and at times thought we didn't give the issues due consideration." Next comment. "The town manager enjoys a good collaborative relationship with the select board and works to provide staff support and quality information for select board determinations in response to the individual select board inquiries." Next category, financial management. Excuse me. "The town's finances under the town manager's leadership are balanced and well planned. Our continued AAA bond rating is a testimony to solid management." Next comment. "Another year of outstanding results. The town received a Standard and Poor's AAA bond rating with a stable outlook. Standard and Poor's noted strong financial policies, funding of the OPEB and the COVID financial plan. Ongoing coordinated department reviews worked well to build financial reserves to fund community initiatives, social and infrastructure initiatives to include affordable housing as well as PFAS mitigation and expansion of drinking water wells with treatment facilities." Next comment. "Working with Alex and her senior team, Jill has done an excellent job in managing the Chatham's finances through the turbulent times." Next category is personnel management, organizational leadership. "Employee turnover is a Capewide challenge. The town manager has been creative about recruitment and hiring, utilizing creative social media postings and local cable access channel 18 to interview retiring employees that reflect on their careers and what it is like to work for the town of Chatham." Next comment. "Town employees are professional, hardworking and dedicated. A relatively senior and experienced workforce that cooperatively takes on more than their day-to-day duties." workforce that cooperatively takes on more than their day-to-day duties. Jill is committed to team-building, professional development, and succession planning. Employment and hiring of existing openings are proving to be a universal challenge. In addition, Jill has proposed, with select board and finance committee support, a cost-effective reorganization that includes several justified new positions. Understanding changes, the new work environment challenges, and the need for innovative hiring will be a continual education effort to the Chatham, to the Chatham public and workforce. Next comment. Encourage the town manager to evaluate town operations to improve staff morale in various departments. Next comment. Filling vacancies and retaining talent is a priority for 20, 20, from 2022 to 2023. A very difficult, tight labor market will make this effort very challenging, but is critical to maintaining operational excellence. Number five, community leadership and public relations. The weekly e-newsletter, The Main Street, has proven to be informative and well-read among the community. Next comment. Jill and her team provided enhanced community outreach through weekly town manager updates, channel 18 productions and outreach, as well as community forums and IT support. Top emails and calls personally addressed to her were promptly acknowledged. Increased public requests and staff workload distribution challenges did cause staff delays in timely responses to some individuals as the town took on projects delayed by COVID. Jill has an excellent relationship with the Chatham business community. Jill is held in high regard. Jill is active in venues outside of Chatham. Jill has an excellent working relationship with our state and federal representatives. Next comment. The town manager interacts well with outside groups and organizations to advance the town's position and interest. A more vocal and visible presence on issues for consideration before the select board would serve to complement her community leadership. The final one is six, the town operations and infrastructure. Even during COVID shutdown and staff vacancy, the town operations and services are strong. The town manager has been able to pivot departmental workloads with little impact to services. Jill continues, next comment. Jill continues her commitment to the improvement of town infrastructure to enhance strategies, delivery of services, and strengthen operations at all levels. From positively reorganizing for the future to being self-aware of continuing personal and organizational improvements. Next comment. Jill successfully executed a reorganization of the town's departments. Jill must ensure that the reorg yields the intended results. Great job on the three- and four-year-old support program. A conclusion, summary of conclusions. Jill performs at an exceptionally high level, not one to avoid difficult problems or crises. She addresses them professionally with a clear head and an analytical approach. Her performance, as well as that of her team during the past years and ever-changing COVID environment, continues to be exemplary. Next conclusion. Chatham is an extremely well-managed town with a, quote, "small" and/or "rural," unquote, year-round population, growing to almost five times its size seasonally. Jill continues to, her commitment to the improvement of town infrastructure, to enhance strategies, delivery of services, and strengthen operations at all levels. From positively reorganizing for the future to being self-aware of continuing personal organizational improvement. Next conclusion. Jill instituted a sound practice for projecting and executing infrastructure needs to include a reorganization, understanding the necessity to ensure the intended results are achieved. Final conclusion. Evaluations are not about perfection, but accepting that there are no efforts without uncertainties, difficulties, and robust opinions. Jill's steady efforts, leadership, and relationship with the public and town departments is reflected in the independent acknowledgement of Chatham as an extremely well-run municipality. A few robust opinions that may become personal in nature are professionally handled with patience and data-supported responses. And that's the, the evaluation for this year, done by each of the board members individually, and the comments were theirs. So I'll turn it over to Jill. Any comments or anybody else on the board? Cory?
Mr. Chair, I'm extremely, put in an awkward position, but I, I feel it's my duty to kind of bring this up. Um, we've all served this chair, so we've all gone through the responsibility of doing the evaluations. And I know we do a sampling, in the, in your presentation is a sampling of comments. Um, I do know that, um, four of my comments were, um, excluded from the report. I don't know if anyone else, just comments were excluded from the report. Um, so I just think, I was going to put on the record, I think moving forward, um, whoever serves as chair next year may want to consider all comments from all members, um, so where it's clear.
I input some of mine and they were, they were-
Well, no, no, I just, I just wanted to put down the record, but-
This, this is why I, I, that, normally it comes out, uh, comments were made that there's a, in, in, a potential issue if you have all the comments down there and all of the rankings, that all of a sudden you've made the whole thing public. I don't know if that's a real issue or not, but all I did was eliminate those that were in my, of course, in my opinion, that were, were, um, were complimentary, said by someone else. And I took a number of mine out. Go, go ahead, Dean.
I, I would just say that, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, when, the year I was chair, I read every comment. It took a longer while to do it, but I did. Um, I suspect in retrospect that most of the comments, if not all, were complimentary. Um, I mean, I think there was some constructive criticism, but it, it does take longer, but I don't have a problem with reading them all. Obviously, I haven't seen the comments of others other than what's reported in here, and I don't necessarily know who, who said what.
Yeah, I left out nothing that I thought was-
My point is that Cory raises-
Not, not, um, not, you know, if somebody, it was, well, as you-
I mean, you have, you have constructive comments here too, but Cory, all I wanted to say is that Cory raises a good point. It'll be up to the next year to decide what he or she would like to do.
Is there an issue there at all? I remember the discussion that, that had about how many comments you put in. There was a question about, um, I remember reading something from the Municipal Management Association or something to that effect. But I'm perfectly happy to read them all. I just-
So the, um, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, what's agreed in the, in our contract as well as the guidance, uh, that we received, um, in years past, not that there was a complaint, was that, uh, it, the presentation is a summary document, and in the summary document we can list the individual ratings that are attached to this. So I, I think that's in, in your version as well. I mean, if the board wants to, uh, have all the comments included, I, I'm not sure I object to that. It's just that it's, as it's presented, it was a summary of the, uh, individual performance evaluations.
And I'll say, it was my summary. Okay, I mean, you know, nobody helped me.
And, and just for the record, the four that were admitted, I'm not suggesting they were negative. I mean, I had a very, very positive comment-
You did.
But it's excluded from the report. So I just, I just bring that up as, I think it's a, it's a potential flaw in what, what we're trying to do as a, as an, as an end result.
Okay, that's fair. Dean?
I, I would just add, because I remember distinctly when, when I was doing it, I had a conversation with Shauna about what goes in and what doesn't go in. And, um, my sense has always been that whoever has been chair picked out comments that were intended to give a reflection of the, the full report. So I guess I, I took the easy way out and said, I'll just read everything. So I didn't have to select. But, uh, again, I think it's, you know, consistent with what Jill is saying. Um, we should probably leave it for the next chair.
I would make it, I would make it easy for the chair. Do them all. It's simple. Uh, Jeff, no?
No, no, I think, I think that's fine. I mean, it is easier for the chair to, to not select, to read them all.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, in, in that regard too, they, all of them are compiled. If you would like staff to distribute those just for your own knowledge, it's, you know, just let us know, um, in the office. I did want to say just a couple of thank yous, um, and just bear with me as I'm too going to have to read this. Um, I, I want to thank the select board for your thoughtful evaluation of our performance. I greatly appreciate the support and feedback from the board throughout the year as we work collaboratively to serve residents, taxpayers, businesses, and visitors of Chatham. I look at this strong supportive evaluation of not just me, but of the entire town workforce that keeps Chatham the special place that it is. I want to thank all town employees for their unwavering dedication to the town during the second year of the COVID pandemic. We face many challenges together, and due to your hard work, uh, we have met each challenge and overcame it. I'm very fortunate to work with a professional and talented team of employees in all departments. I appreciate the leadership of the department heads, department managers, supervisors, and working foremen. Working as Team Chatham, we've had many successes in accomplishing the select board goals, the committee initiatives, and maintain our own high-quality standards to provide day-to-day service to the public. Employees supported and inspired each other and me over the last two years to serve Chatham while personally navigating through a pandemic. And I want to thank the employees from the bottom of my heart, and thank you as well as the Board of, Select Board. Thank you.
Thank you, Jill. So, that finishes tonight. We have a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Second. Okay, let's take a vote. Shereen?
Aye.
Cory?
Aye.
Dean?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Chair says aye. Good night, Chatham, and thank you. Have a good week.